Oh, Hershey's looks like her.
She say she was. Yes.
Brothers or something?
Yeah, Boston or something.
I'm in Boston. Hi, I'm here.
Hi, Hershey.
Hi, folks.
It is awesome, isn't it? Where are you in Boston?
I'm in Somerville because I'm flying out tomorrow to San Francisco for a conference. So I have a very early flight, so it just seemed easier to go hang out with friends and have some sushi.
Okay.
Yeah. But I am here and I have my binder with me.
Perfect.
I have read my materials. Thank you very much. I love my binder. Good binder system. Working great.
Big love.
And muted.
Is Christie going to be joining at all tonight?
We really don't think we needed it.
No, it's by pretty straightforward words. So what we'll do is we'll open the public hearing. Someone to pull it in now maybe that's.
It's Tom Howard.
Okay, why don't we move forward? The first item tonight is before we open the regular meeting. Now, we have a public hearing to conduct tonight regarding the MS four ordinance changes which would incorporate or entail changes to chapter ninety six, chapter one oh nine, chapter one twenty one, and chapter one forty. Those are all specific chapters within Arizona ordinance or our town code are related to that have effects on municipal stormwater control. So if there's no objections from the board, what I will do is I'll open the public hearing. No objection, we'll open the public hearing at seven oh two. So for those that are interested here in the audience and those interested on Zoom now or later, the town has what's called an MS four stormwater permit. And it's been ongoing in the town for quite some time. There are a series of changes that the town needs to make to its exist, some of its existing ordinances prior to June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. The town has a consultant engineer who assists us with keeping our necessary permits up to date as well as offering us some of the ordinance changes that are in some regards, you know, ministerial in nature that they just need to, you know, be brought up to speed to reflect some changes in state law, but also some that could frankly have some maybe more far reaching impacts in the town. In general, the changes that are required by June thirtieth. Is it twenty 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 three? I'm sorry if I said twenty twenty two, but June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. Requiring timely removal of non-stump stormwater discharge from the town's separated storm drain system. Item two is requiring timely maintenance of private stormwater infrastructure after construction and updating schedules for enforcement. And adoption of specific erosion and sedimentation control standards for proposed developments. For those that listened in with board members that were here at the last one of several meetings ago, we heard from Christie on those proposed to the ordinances. And at that point in time, the board saw no issue with those. And we're here tonight to discuss and hear any questions, comments, or concerns from the public. So that's a general overview. Are there any comments from those here in the public that wish to comment on any of these proposed changes? Is there anybody in Zoom that would like to make any comments during this public hearing on those changes? Those can be found on our website. I see no further comments. And so are there any further comments from this board? Good evening then. No further comments, then we will close the public hearing at seven oh five. And so thank you very much. And so from here, I would imagine that letter that we drafted for the town hall or for the council can probably just be updated with a date. And so maybe we can just get that done and send that effectively out to the council for their continued action. That would be fantastic because I think this concludes our process. Okay, right. So welcome, everybody. We'll move right into the regular meeting. February fifteenth to the the South Berwick Planning Board, and I'll ask everybody to rise with the flag of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag in the United States of America. The Republic which stands on the nation.
Good. You can see some folks joining us on Zoom. So good evening and welcome. The first order of business in all of our meetings is to ask the public if there is any comment. You can reserve time now if there's a particular item on the agenda that you wish to speak to. If not, you can, you know, make any other statement or question the board at anything that's not on the agenda. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to comment? Seeing none, we'll go to Zoom. Anybody on Zoom wish to make any public comments? Seeing none, we will go right into approval of the minutes of February first, twenty twenty three. I hope everybody's had an opportunity to look at them. All I need to look at real quick is a reminder who was not here. And who abstained or from the meeting?
Chris, Chris and I abstain from a chunk, any chunk of the meeting that dealt with the lower Main Street project.
Okay, so I mean, I think we'll have. Yeah. And so before we actually get into the official action part tonight, I don't know when the council met or if they're meeting, but I know we had a resignation of Burnell. Did they recognize that and officially appoint Chris to the board yet, or has that not been done?
I don't think that's been done quite yet. It's happening. I believe that they're next.
Okay, so Chris tonight, I think we will recognize you as a voting member of the board tonight. For official action, it's going to make sure that we follow the bylaws of that. So that being said, is there a motion to accept the February first, twenty twenty three minutes?
I just have one comment on these. The only thing that I saw was on page, the top of page three where we voted on. And one oh four in that range. Or actually it's one oh three. It looks like I made the motion and then I was also the one to second it, but I believe it was Greg that seconded it. But other than that, I didn't see anything else.
Okay, I'll double check for a second.
Yeah. I think it was, I think. There was only fifty 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 shot.
So it was actually Bill who made the motion and Greg who seconded it just for the sake of conversation. It's in there. Yep.
But just, all right, so if you want to go ahead and make a motion to approve as amended. Or for clarification in there, that's going to be appropriate. Seconded, we moved and seconded any further conversation. And I'm going to stop right there because I just want to take a reminder here. We are going to take a roll call vote because Hershey is attending remote, so we're required to do a roll call vote. So it's been moved and seconded any further conversation. Okay, Hershey, I'm going to start with you. Hershey.
I.
Are you going to abstain or are you going to say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
And Chris? Okay, fair enough. I, okay, fair enough. Motion passes. Minutes are approved. Thank you very much. First item under due business, I'm just going to ask, does the board have any issues if we kind of move some of the items around and just get right to SP Minor Site Plan twenty three zero zero one regarding the issue here tonight, looks like a minor subdivision of land. I'd assume you're here for that.
Yeah.
Is there any objection to kind of moving that forward first and then we can kind of get into some other business? Hershey, any thoughts? No? Okay. All right, so for the board tonight is an application for a subdivision, yeah, subdivision off of Lord's Land. I have a large plan here for anybody that I already looked at it. We have in here. Again, it's SP, not Major Site Plan, but it's SP. What do we call this one? Twenty three zero zero one LJD Properties, Seven Lord Lane. And so we should all have received the information, the copy of the application. This is a sketch plan review. Our opportunity tonight is to discuss with the gentleman any questions, comments, or concerns we have on this. Seems pretty straightforward, frankly. Again, it's off of Lord's Lane and, you know, it's sketch plan. We can decide to accept it tonight. We went to preliminaries. Or we can decide we need more information before moving forward. So with that being said. Tom?
Yeah.
Tom, I'll hand it over to you. If you just want to, you know, say anything to the board, I think we all, again, we all look at the copy of the sketch. I think it's pretty self explanatory what you're looking to do.
Yeah, so I've lived on Lord's Lane for thirty plus years. I live on nineteen Lord's Lane. This land, I acquired this house. I bought this house months ago. And I sold the house, put it into the land that butts my land on the backside. So I'm looking, it's about six and a half acres that abuts my eight acres. And I'm looking to split it into three. And I had Nathan Anstead did my survey. And so I think it's got three hundred and seventy eight feet on one lot, front edge of the road. Three fifteen on on the other lot and then five hundred and fifty on the middle lot. He kind of moved it out on the the survey.
That is the I one down there. Or I two. It was the district on that.
I think it's I two.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's the west side of two thirty six, yeah.
So it doesn't really sound like there's going to be any frontage issues at all, which would probably be in this instance that larger of the issues. Jen, you've looked at it? Any, anything you want to?
No, I just want to clarify. It is in the R three zone.
R three?
Yeah. No. There's no issue with it. It's pretty straightforward. The only thing that I would let the board know that maybe Mr. Howard didn't is the two lots, if you look, it's a shared driveway access coming in. And then the third lot access is off two thirty six, which is Dale Highway, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
So is, can I, Mr. Chair?
She go ahead.
I just, I just had a few quick questions because I drive down Lord Lane all the time and have noticed it got cleared out. One is, is that Kemp Hagan or Lords Brook that comes through on that property or is it on the other side of Lord's Lane? Because I know that is included in one of the protection zones, I think, but maybe you're far away or maybe it's on the other side of the road and that's just wetlands.
It's a runoff. There is a runoff that goes under the under the highway there.
So it's just drainage from the other side of the road? Because doesn't the brook go across there, the one that comes out, you know, further down on Flynn's Lane and Lord's Lane? You know, and crosses old fields?
I'm not sure where Lords Brook is, but this this one goes right behind my house also. It dries completely up in August. I think it's just runoff, but I don't know if it's.
Okay.
Land survey done. Also with a survey.
It, I think it's possible it's on the other side of Lord's Lane. I just know that it goes through and comes out of you know, and crosses old fields and continues on the other side. So maybe that's where it originates. Um.
I think it runs toward Waterside Lane. It heads toward one oh three.
No. No, that's, that's something else then. There's, there's definitely, I think it's, it's called Kemp Hagan or Lords Brook. It uses both names, I think, that comes and and follows Lord's Lane, crosses Old Fields, and continues along Flynn's Lane. It's just a name change for the same street. And follows all the way along there until it gets to a path. And then it takes a turn. And then it might, you might be right, Chris, then it might come out Waterside at the very end of it.
By the Lord's Lane. Side of the road.
It's on the one side.
It's on the water. It's on the other side. Okay. Um. Well, oh, and is there any, there's no safety concern about adding a driveway on on two thirty six that as a state road? Is there anything you have to do about that or?
He'll have to, um.
Yeah, I was gonna, yeah, that was a question.
If you know it.
Nope, that was a question I was gonna have.
Yeah, so what he'll have to do is if the driveway is created before July one, he'll have to apply for a state permit for that driveway.
O T permit.
O T, yep. And if it's after July one, then the town's taken over anyways. So you would have to apply for a permit through the town at that time. So it just depends whenever that building lot goes in and that driveway gets in there. But, um, yeah, that's how you do it.
Oh, then, then my follow up question has nothing to do with this project. When we take over the road, is there going to be a speed zone change by any chance?
We'll talk about all that later.
Okay, okay, just curious. I'm done. Thank you, Tom.
You still have control over the speed.
Yeah.
There is a, there is an entrance over there on the other end next to the old state garage.
Ah, okay.
Up there.
Did you, can I ask, did you also buy the property on the other side of Lord's Lane? Because that also got completely cleared out, I noticed, when your lots did.
My guy clearing it and he wanted, he's got horses, so he wanted to clear a pasture. So he just came over and they moved the machine to the other side of the road.
Oh, is that in a protection zone? Just curious.
That for you, Hershey.
He's got seventeen acres over there.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
So. You know, again, we're not being asked to necessarily approve the project because we go to preliminary. Sounds like we might just want to clarify that there is no wetland in there, you know, in terms of the Brooks that I can't visualize it right now. But that would, but that would come up in the next plan and you may already have it with the wetland. Yeah, yeah, and that would really more come up though if you were to actually start putting stuff in, you know, right? Doesn't necessarily affect the, the actual subdivision. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, actually, me and Mr. Howard already looked into this.
Yeah.
And we didn't see what broke that ran through. However, I have it as a note to check that tomorrow. Yeah.
Yeah, no, good.
So if it does, he'll have to put it in.
So you've done, done the homework on this one. We're good.
Yeah, a little bit.
All right. So are there any further questions from the board on this one that pertains to subdivision? You looked at the subdivision ordinance. So, you know, we can move forward to the preliminary plan. That's an option. Part of that would be a discussion on whether or not this board wants to, you know, do a site walk. If you see the need to do that, this is where we would make that determination. We would also need to set a public hearing.
I, I don't feel that need, but then again, I drive by it constantly. So, you know.
No, I mean, you know, as one board member, I'm pretty good with this one. It's very straightforward. But we do need to hold a public hearing on this. We can't get out of that one. So again, does the board want to conduct a sidewalk? I wouldn't mind. I'm not, I mean, I've looked at it on the, on my phone, but I can't visualize it to what I see on the map, so I wouldn't mind it. Okay. I'm, I'm. That's fine. I mean, I'll. We can set up a right time. I'll go along for the ride on that. Too early in the morning or whatever, you know, there's the desire of another board member.
If it's going to be an official sidewalk, it has to be three members or more.
Yeah, that's where I'm going. Yeah, yeah. So.
If I, if I can make it, I'll be there. That's fine. If we're having one, I'll show up linked it that way. So.
Then why don't we go ahead and set a sidewalk? What are, what are our March meetings?
First and fifteenth.
First and fifteenth. I will be away next week.
Next week?
Next week, not.
Okay.
But next week. Okay, so, you know, in the past, we've done early morning on my end. If we're going to do a public hearing early or a walk. Early morning is my preferred time. I don't mind it. And again, it's not Monday or Thursday, I feel early morning. Okay. So if our meeting is on the first, I can do the first.
Does it, does it have to be on a day where we have a meeting?
Oh, it could be what I'm just trying to think. And I'm not dead set on how I am. Well, if you're not dead set on having, what's the desire, you know? Chris? Yeah. I guess Mike, you know, we're right next to two thirty six as long as he take care of the or we're just concerned in terms of access of the third lot. All of that's taken care of, then.
You're welcome to go to it.
Yeah. I can do that as well.
Is that people have done it in the past, just can't.
Yeah, so, right, so, so for the, so for the record then, would you want a motion to not do a public hearing because the ordinance says that we should? It makes sense to say officially no for the record.
Are you talking sidewalk?
The sidewalk, yeah. Yeah, yeah, right. I'm sorry.
So you guys can vote. I would vote on not doing it or doing it.
Yeah.
And see, and then.
Does anybody want to make a motion to not conduct the sidewalk?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second? Okay, to move any conversation? So we'll do a roll call. Hershey?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Go.
I'm.
I. Okay, so the board voted to not conduct the sidewalk. But we will have a public hearing on this matter. And so when we pull this off by the first meeting by March first, given the advertising.
Yes.
Okay, so would there be a motion to schedule a public hearing for March first that are part of our regular meeting? So, okay, any second?
Second.
Okay. And any conversation? Hershey will start voting with you.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay, so we'll have a public hearing. So I think the other motion should be then to give you the authorization to proceed because we just by default said you're going to go to preliminary plan. So is there a motion to approve the sketch plan for SP twenty three zero zero one and move it to preliminary? So moved. Okay, is there a second? Seconded. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any conversation? Seeing none, Hershey, we'll start with you then.
Aye.
Okay. I, motion is unanimous. You can go to, you know, a preliminary plan. You can work with Jen on when exactly you're prepared to bring it back that there will be a public hearing on this matter, March first at seven P M. All right, great. All right. You're welcome. How good is it?
So contact me tomorrow. Okay, thanks. Yeah, that's good.
So now that we have dispensed with that, we've been tableing for quite some time some ordinance updates. Table it again. Let's get out of here. Yeah. Yeah. And so.
It's doing anything in August, right?
Yeah.
We're busy till then.
Yeah. So let's see here, we have in our packet of information, you know, let's see, chapter one twenty seven dash twenty seven under A one, we'd like to add a line. Again, you should have this in your package. You've received it. A pre-submitting meeting, which makes all the sense in the world. You know, probably some issues could be resolved in pre-application meeting before they submit. We have that one particular issue. If the board is okay with moving forward, we need to move that to a public hearing. I guess before I go to the next one, Jenny, is there any comment you want to make on that?
It would just be more helpful to the board if you guys accepted this change. They would come into the code office with your application. We'd sit down with them, give them all the steps to move forward and then you guys would any word and see them when the application is ready for you and all the documentation is ready to go. Instead of you guys trying to determine if it's, you know.
Do you think that language accomplishes that in a strong enough fashion?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I just earlier submitted some I don't know what I want to say, some notes that I took on this language and I love the language and I love the idea of the pre-submitting meeting. I don't know what I wanna say, some notes that I took on this language and I, and I love the language and I love the idea of the pre-submital meetings. But what I just gave to Jenny to just look for is exactly what you just said, language that might be a little stronger. I don't know that we need it. I would go with what she thinks works for her, it's code and planner, but I put a few things in there that are a little more stringent. One of the things I like is saying that basically. There's, there, there has to be some, some sort of a definition on how many meetings these people can go through. In other words, you can't just keep going to the code or the planning office with an application. For how long could you just keep doing that? That, that was my confusion about it. It says a pre-submital meeting. What if it requires five?
That's up to the planning staff.
That's what I put in my language though, is to say flat out maybe required more than one pre-submital meeting and it would be up to the discretion. Of the C E O and the planner. So that way you don't say, well, I had my meeting. I wanna, I wanna exercise my right right now to go to the planning board because it only says a pre-submital meeting. I know it's minutia. But I thought.
Well, you know, Chris, Chris does have a point, uh, and you know, as I sit here and listen to Chris.
I, 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 I didn't make enough coffee.
Yeah, no, 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 that's fine. I, I, I. One of the things. That you may wanna consider. Is you, when, when someone, what we have to watch out for is when someone submits an application, right? We have to act on it. And hear it within thirty days, right? It's right there. So, I, perhaps some language we might wanna add to pre-submital. And I think we can determine that tonight would be, and we'd have to check back with Phil. Cause you know, I don't, how everything interacts.
Mister Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Before you change anything, before we move forward with that. Let me just explain to you that the reason why the language is like it is, is because. The planning department and the court office cannot um, determine if an application is complete. Under our bylaws and our town ordinance. That's why it's. The way it is. It's just to ensure the waivers are correctly filled out. The application is complete in a way that the information that the planning board needs to receive, it's all there.
Yep.
But by no, by no chance can we tell an applicant that their application is complete. We cannot.
Yeah, no, so fair enough. I guess what I'm saying is, I, I think what I'm, what I'm saying is, I think this would bolster that point.
Okay, good.
And what I'm saying is, it may be beneficial to add. Some language in there, any, any timeframes. You know, uh, and I'm trying to think of the word as we're talking here, are, are, are. Our wave or the timeframes for the applications. What I'm, what I'm trying, what I'm trying to say here is, you have to go through the pre-submital and upon the satisfaction that. Uh, the, you know, the application, uh, and the waivers are there, everything is there, that everything seems to be in order. I know you can't say the word complete, cause only the planning board can do that. I get that. What I'm suggesting is. On one hand, in part A, well, you're gonna submit it and then we have to hear it in thirty days. That's what it says right there. The concept of a pre-submital, absolutely agree, hundred percent on board. But there should be some waiver of limitation, some waiver of. Your pre-submital. Has to be completed to yours, to the, to the town's satisfaction. Before uh, the application could be submitted, cause once the application is submitted.
Clock doesn't start running on the thirty days to get to the planning board. You are sufficiently okay with the app.
That's, that's what I was. That's what I'm trying to say to it, yeah.
Correct, yes, we can, yeah. Pre-um, pre-submital meetings that we have in the code office or the planning office anyways. And um, you know, an applicant comes in front of us, yep, we hand them all their information back, yep, until they're ready to submit, yep. And when they're ready to submit, that's when we stamp it received and the clock starts to.
I think, I think that that is pretty.
Do you think?
I think, I think it's fairly clear, cause it says the, the order is a little bit weird, because. The paragraph above it talks about, talks about the application and then one, point one order is. Pre-submital meeting shall be held with the town planner and code enforcement officer before submission of documents to the planning board. So I think that that, that to me sounds like that. They're not handing in their application and then having this meeting. They have to have this meeting before they submit the documents.
Well, I, I see that, I.
So it doesn't start the, it doesn't start the clock.
So do you wanna make one? Do you wanna make it A and move A down to B? Is that what you're saying? Like reverse them?
I would say you almost need to add, don't, don't put it under one. I would say, you know. The indexing needs to change. Uh, one would be pre-submital meeting.
Yeah, so you just make that, A, A would be B and the rest of them would get bumped down.
And I would make that very clear. From the beginning, because I think that's a critical function that needs to happen.
And you might wanna do meeting slash, uh, maybe like a slash S or a, you know, in parentheses, S after the meeting, so it's meeting.
Yeah.
Or meetings.
Yeah.
That makes it.
Yeah, I think.
So, you know, you might not resolve everything in one meeting. Maybe it takes a couple before you can actually submit your application to the board and start that thirty day clock.
Correct.
And you might even go with. I, I, yes, we wanna, I think you might wanna mention in there that. The clock doesn't start until after the pre-submital has been.
Stamped.
Standard deemed approved.
Yeah.
Something. Yeah, no, 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 that is, that the pre-application is.
I think it's worth putting it in there in plain English, because it, I think, I think you could come to that conclusion if you. Read it, but we're all kinda reading something a little bit different, so I think if you just say it.
I want it to be very clear.
Application is, this is not an application. This is. Pre-application.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's almost. Application meeting, not a.
So, let's come up with the correct way to write it. So if somebody wants to read it out loud and then add that little part to it. So I can write it down.
So I would say maybe, and again, I'm just gonna write, yeah, write it down, because someone else may say something prior to submitting a formal application to the planning board.
Prior, hold on, prior to. Okay?
Uh, an applicant must, uh. Uh, what's the word here? Partake in, um.
Mandatory pre-submital. Conferences.
I, I think the language here is pretty strong already, cause it say pre-submital meeting, meetings shall be held with, so if you say. Prior to, prior to formal application, pre-submital meeting shall be held, yes.
I agree, so prior to formal application.
To planning board.
To the planning board.
Yep.
Pre-submital meeting, use your words right there.
I think that, I think the rest of it, if you, if you. Put in that first part, I think the rest of it reads quite well. For what we're intending, I think anyways. This makes very clear that this is. Not the official application and the rest of it is, is strong enough.
Some applicants come in front of us and they're ready to submit. So they'll talk to us, they'll show us everything and then they're ready.
That's all, that, that's great, we also have a lot that are.
That's correct, that's true, yep.
I need two clarifications.
Sure.
Okay. Um, this may go to the authority of the C E O, so it doesn't have to be sort of enumerated again. But my concern was that, that, that the applicant would know that you have the right. As the code enforcement officer or planner, I don't know where that language will land, planner or code. To, to have meetings with uh, licensed third parties that you feel you need to. That you're allowed to do research into the project, that you're allowed to do. Is that in, is that inside of that?
It's, the code officer can um. Do any kind of findings they wanna do on any application or any documentation. That's already under the purview.
Alright, so that's, that's already in there, it doesn't need to be said again. Yeah, and one other question. Are you allowed to change anything? If I go to you and I've got this, I, I've got a sketch plan or whatever I'm going to it. And I have my overlays incorrect, I've got the case designation incorrect. Are you allowed to say to them you have to change these? Because by doing that, you're changing the nature of the application.
Essentially the planning board, so if the applicant comes in front of us. And they have the wrong like map and law, the wrong zoning overlay district, I know that. Um, we can share that with them and then I can certainly share that with the board as well in a memo.
Okay, so the, but the applicant could choose to not make those corrections.
Town staff can, can. Recommend.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was just slightly confused about it, cause I think we could run into somebody obstinate a little bit, that would say, well, my application is perfect. I heard what, what code enforcement said, but I would still rather get to the planning board and I'm just wondering where that puts the planning board again.
That puts us right into third party review.
There you go, so that's the point.
That's exactly what it puts us in, so this is.
Can I, can I just? Can I just mention for trying to make this process better, that um. We've had a few very unusual cases and that is not the rule in my, I don't know, four or four, five years, four years in the planning board. Almost all of the, you know, stuff we've had in front of us is, is fairly straightforward. Um, we've had very good staff support of it all. I, I think the idea of having a pre-meeting is great to head off problems. But I don't also think, um. I think it's good the way it is. I think, I think, um. Making a lot of rules and regulations around stuff that really hasn't been a big problem, except maybe. Once is, you know, just complicates things. So that's my two cents.
Change it, or are you saying, I would agree, putting in that pre-submital language as it's suggested here?
No, no, I think the pre-submital language is fine. I think having, I think it's really smart to have as needed, you know, but it. I mean. Ninety-nine percent of the applicants who come in want to get their stuff passed and take advice from. Jen and Amy and whatever planners we've had. It's not like, you know, this has been an ongoing drawn out issue for a lot of applications. Just. I just wanna make sure, you know.
Clarification, I wasn't basing those suggestions on whatever case may or may not have been from the planning board. I just did a screening of a lot of towns online and looked at their pre-application. Processes and they just seem to be so detailed. I just wondered if we were missing something. That's, that's all I was thinking.
Mister Chair, if I can read the way it's gonna sound, so it's gonna say, prior to some formal submittal to the planning board. Pre-submital meeting shall be held with the town planner and code enforcement officer before submission of documents to the planning board to ensure. Ordinances are being met and any waivers being submitted are properly addressed. And then, how do you wanna word the thirty day rule? So.
I think that's gonna be, be spoken to still in the second paragraph.
So we're still good with that, we're gonna leave that out and we're gonna change this to A. We're gonna change A to B and then change it all the way down.
Yeah, and then, and then. Cause then you do the pre.
Okay.
Pre-submital meeting and then you get to the formal application and within that, then it says you gotta, we have thirty days to.
Yeah.
Dress it.
Sounds great, perfect.
Yeah, I think there'd be a thing to re-indexing would do a lot. And again, if we get the, you know, the memo or if we get the sense that there's something going on. Send it to third party review.
Exactly.
You know, we have that right, any stuff in the way to, to do that. And then we'll go there and then debate the merits or demerits of the third party review.
So do you want to take a vote on as amended and then we can still um, do a public hearing next time?
So is there a motion to re-index the proposal on one twenty-seven dash twenty-seven? As discussed, in adding in the language prior to, uh, what was the word, prior to?
Prior to formal submittal to the planning board.
There you go, adding those, adding that. Preemption in there. So moved. There's a second.
Second.
Yeah, Bill got the second and so any further conversation? No, okay, we'll, we'll uh, take a roll call vote, Hershey?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Motion passes and um. Uh, can we have a secondary motion to uh, move this to a public hearing for March first?
So moved.
And we, oh, hang on, Hershey, would you like to second?
I second, thank you, thank you, Greg.
Go on now, okay. Alright, uh, could move to second and any further conversation? No, okay. All in favor, Hershey, I will start with you.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes, thank you. So the next one, uh, that we're being asked to review or contemplate is the uh. Changing some dimension, dimensional requirements, the I one, I two. Uh, essentially, they're looking to reduce some of the frontage requirements. Now, I one, I two is the industrial zone here in town. Uh, in your packet of information, uh, you all should have had an opportunity to uh, review. Uh, a letter from our C E O as well as Denise LeVette, the Director of Economic and Community Development. Justifying uh, the request to reduce the current requirements in the I one, I two from seventy-five feet to forty. The rationale made complete sense, uh, you know, meeting frontage requirements in industrial loan, you know, um. Can be somewhat prohibitive. Uh, and so, you know, allowing folks to have a smaller frontage. Can actually enhance and bring in potentially some more businesses and make us more business friendly in regards to that of the industrial zone. That is the only proposed change. It would be a change to chapter one forty, table B, which is the. Uh, that addresses the dimensional requirements in the I one, I two and every other zone for that matter. Uh, again, it's reducing from seventy-five, uh, the frontage, uh, to forty and then what they call the front step back. And so, um, thirty-five everywhere else. Are there any, any questions or comments from any board member here? Or Hershey, you know, Jenny, is there? Is there a, it's kind of like a standard of, of, amongst other towns of what their typical step backs are? Do you have any idea?
Actually did some, the question, we did some research on this and forty seems to be the average. Yeah. Not only does it create more potential for businesses to come through, it actually naturally slows down traffic as well. Yeah, with um, signs and businesses and buildings are closer to the road. There's your answer, Hershey.
Good to hear.
So pretty straightforward. I don't really see an issue here. I mean, this is being requested, you know, by some competent individuals. Uh, that have the, I believe, the best interest of the town, uh, in mind. And so, does anybody wish to, uh. Accept the recommended change in the I one, I two and the front step back. Uh, reducing from seventy-five to forty.
So moved.
Moved, is there a second? Second, second, any further conversation? Seeing none, I'll start with you, Hershey.
Aye.
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, so that motion passes and is there a corresponding motion to put this to a public hearing? Also for March first, twenty twenty-three, so we'll have three public hearings on March first.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And seconded, uh, any further conversation? Seeing none, Hershey?
Aye.
Aye.
Bill?
Aye. Aye.
And the motion passes on that. Is this board, Jenny, uh, expect any further, you know, one, one of the things I just want to be cognizant of, I'm supportive of these changes. Uh, are there any more comment that we need to maybe be aware of? Uh, or. Rather than getting one in at a time and just doing a bunch of public hearings or, you know. If, if we have an ongoing list that maybe we can tackle in chunks, but we'd, we'd be violating requests so that, you know. We're not gonna have fifty-two public hearings on this stuff. We can kinda do like chunks of ordinances at once. I mean, we all have talked from time to time. There's some issues, there's some ambiguity, there's some contradictory language within the ordinances and we probably oughta all. All of us here take a look, but I, I know that the town has been writing some of this down too, as the stuff comes up, so.
The next, yeah, so the next packet of ordinance changes you're gonna get includes five different changes. Um, you should see them probably sometime late March, maybe early April, depending on when we finish them. Um, takes more than one person writing them.
What, what do you, where, where they, where are those going or what are they in general?
Some of it is just language changes, some of it's just definition changes or clarifying definitions and then, um. We have one that's, um. Re-clarifying the downtown area of South Rowan to make it more business friendly.
Okay.
So I don't know exact verbiage on all of them yet. We're working on it.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Alright, so at some point in March, April?
Yeah.
Okay, something to plan. I think that concludes new business focus. I think we set a record for getting out of here early tonight. So, are there any member comments? No, okay, hurt anybody here at the table? Zach, you got one?
Welcome to the planning board, Chris. Almost.
Yeah.
Glad we have an alternate member.
Yeah.
Nice to be able to, to have that and it's nice to have a full board again.
We did have a gentleman pull an application, it's like, you know, for an alternate.
Okay. Uh, motion to adjourn.
Secondly.
So moved. Alright, sounded like you were making a vote. Hershey?
No, yeah, yes, I.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, aye. Okay, we're here, thank you folks.
Thank you, well done, well done, record time. Thanks. Thanks.